So happy to see you all here. I'm Victoria Barley. I represent the West Pasco Board of Realtors. This wonderful home of which you are in, we're very, very proud of it. We have used it many, many times for events like this and also special occasions, but we don't do that anymore. We just allow these very important political opportunities to come and be in our house with us. So, we're happy you're here with us tonight. We're looking forward to everything that we learn this evening. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to our partner, which is Derek Potlitz, the Chairman of the Board for the West Pasco Chamber of Commerce.
So again, my name's Derek Potlitz. I'm a financial planner in Newport Richie, beautiful Newport Richie, but Port Richie is just as beautiful. And we're our great partners over there in Newport Richie. And again, this year, I am Chairman of the Board of West Pasco Chamber of Commerce. We are proud to sponsor these debates. And as we were talking before, I'm not sure if we've done this for city debates before, but we have a number of great candidates for this year's election. And we wanted to present a forum for these gentlemen and ladies to come up here and get their views and opinions out. So, welcome. And without further ado, we're going to bring Mr. Bruce Mills here with our Public Policy Committee.
Thank you, everyone. I was going to thank everybody, but everybody's already said everything. So, I would like to thank the Board of Realtors for the beautiful building and letting us be in this facility. I'd also like to thank C.T. Bowen, who's going to be the moderator today. He's been writing about the people and politics of Pasco County for 30 years, a lot of years. And I'd also like to introduce our candidates. We have Bill Colombo, and I'm going to let him tell about himself in his opening statement, and also Terry Rowe. There are two other candidates, Richard Bloom and Claudia Smith, who are not able to attend. So, we'll hear from these two. And before we, before everybody came in, the two of these gentlemen flipped a coin to see who's going to go first. And Mr. Rowe is going to have the opening statement first, followed by Mr. Colombo, and then we'll have the questions, which will go back and forth. And then it's going to be the same order for the closing, with Mr. Rowe followed by Mr. Colombo on the closing. And the opening will be three minutes. Each question will be two minutes. C.T. will ask a question, then they will each have two minutes. It will alternate who gets which question first, or who answers the question first. And then the closing will be two minutes. When they're speaking, there's a clock up here that has a bunch of red lights on it that the candidates can see. And when they hit down to 30 seconds, the yellow light will go on. And when it's down to 15 seconds, the yellow light is still on. And Cynthia Armstrong will hold up the sign that says 15 seconds. And then, when there's no time, we have the red light and a nice bell. Thank you, Cynthia. And this is school board member Cynthia Armstrong, by the way, is our official timer. With that, if everybody can please turn off their cell phones or put them on vibrate. Now is a good time to do it. And also, please hold your applause till the end and don't clap for every, each question or each candidate as we go through. We'll let you applaud at the end. And with that, first up is Terry Rowe with your three-minute opening statement.
Make sure this works. Uh-oh. There it goes. Testing. Okay, everybody hear me all right? All right, are we going? Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. First, I want to thank the West Pasco Chamber of Commerce for hosting this forum. I would also like to acknowledge the West Pasco Board of Realtors, our emcee, Mr. Bruce Mills, our moderator, Mr. C.T. Bowen, and the audience for being here with us tonight. Thank you all for your attendance, your interest, and your concern in our great city. My name is Terry Rowe, and I'm running for reelection to the Port Ritchie City Council. Today, I give a message of hope, determination, and the promise of a brighter future for Port Ritchie. I have been on city council for eight wonderful years. In that time, I've been working tirelessly to improve, renovate, and rejuvenate our little city by the river. The history of Port Ritchie has had its ups and downs. Tonight, I want to share with you what we have been able to accomplish with a willing heart, community spirit, and a progressive council that isn't afraid to get out of its own way. I believe that the city council we have now has brought more progress in a short time span to Port Ritchie than we have ever seen before. We need to keep up the momentum, and we need not to look back. To date, we have started dredging Port Ritchie's channels, finally. We have repaired the city's water plant and are now saving the wasted yearly $500,000 of purchased water from outside our city. We have refurbished limestone fishing pier. The previous council had talked about tearing it down. It is now beautiful and open for all to enjoy. It has been renamed Mallet Pier, after our noted Port Ritchie residents and their historic families. The current council also built Port Ritchie its first and very own dog park. We installed water pumps in the Gateway Mobile Home Parks, and we're working on flooding issues throughout the city. We have also relentlessly pursued the paving of Orange Grove Avenues and others that need it. We did all this, and we were still able to lower your taxes. And folks, we're not done yet. There are several projects that are in the works. I will share them with you in my closing remarks. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Colombo.
Can I stand? Or? Do you mind? That's fine. It's easier to look out of, folks, when I'm standing up, so I appreciate that. My name is Bill Colombo, and again, as Terry said, I'd like to thank the West Pasco Chamber of Commerce, the West Pasco Board of Realtors for this opportunity, all of you for coming. I really appreciate that. It's good to see debate. I wish there were more of them. It's been many, many years since there's been one. Probably the last interview, we had a debate a number of years ago, and the last interview I did with you, Mr. Bowen, was probably about eight or nine years ago. So, it's good to see you back, and I look forward to your questions. I've lived in Florida since I was 16 years old, in this west coast area of Tampa Bay, since everywhere up and down the beaches, but in Pasco County since 1985, Port Ritchie since about 14 years now. I ran as the Physical Plan Services Director for 30 years, a large retirement center in Pinellas County. I had a staff and a budget that is about the same size as the city of Port Ritchie. I have all the experience that it comes with, running both the management and the personnel, the insurance, those regulatory items that need to be taken care of. I've served on our city council previously for seven years. Seven of them, I was elected by my fellow council members as Vice Mayor, and I acted twice as Acting Mayor, when Mr. Rowe could no longer serve in that capacity, and the unfortunate passing of Eloise Taylor when she was Mayor. So, I have eight months sitting in the Mayor's chair. So, I know pretty much every seat up there. I am running a pretty low-scale campaign here. I am not beholden to anyone or any special interests. I weigh every issue on council that comes before me on its own merit. I represent the residents, the property owners, the business owners, and the interests of the city itself. Competency, transparency, and common sense on council and the administration of the city is paramount. And that is what I have striven to do in the past, and that's what I strive to do in the future. Much was accomplished during my tenure on city council. Much of it I shared with Mr. Rowe. We say, when I was first elected, we saved the city from dissolution. It was on the brink of no longer being a city. We were on the brink of financial emergency. We brought the city out of financial emergency, put it on sound financial footing. We accomplished many of the major improvements that we enjoy today, including water quality and securing the grant funds that are allowing us to do now what we are enjoying, including dredging, improving sidewalks, you know, the BP money, the funds that we secured, our matching grant funds. We spent time doing that. So, I will not really draw this out too much, except to say that I have got a lot of experience on council. I look forward to continuing serving on council, and I appreciate the support that I've gotten from those many people. Thank you.
Mr. Colombo, I'm going to start with you, since Mr. Rowe got to go first.
I don't know where the microphone went, so I'll come back up there.
I think Bruce might be handing it to you.
Would you rather?
Okay.
Yeah, fine.
Pasco County's on the verge of having its own recreational scallop fishing season this July.
Yep.
And if all goes according to plan, the hope is that the county will be able to host a summer-long season like our neighbors to the north, beginning in 2020. Considering the proximity of Nix Park, what do you see as Port Ritchie's role in what is being touted as a potential tourism, small business boom for all of West Pasco?
Well, it's great that finally scalloping is going to open up down in this area. It's going to be great for the entirety of West Pasco, all the way up and down. Obviously, Nix Park is, for this area, the major access to the Gulf. Now, I foresee the city working along with the county to maximizing that potential as much as possible. But outside of the fact that we have a ramp, the best thing we can do is make sure that we can facilitate those people that are going to be coming into town, especially when it comes to the waterfront district. We have parking issues, which are being addressed now. But those are issues that are going to be of major concern. I foresee that we should be able to utilize waterfront park with some events, too, to help this along in that particular project.
Thank you. Take the podium, or? Same question, sir, yes. Would you like to hear it again?
I was going to address this in my closing comments. The parking has been a problem in the waterfront area for some time. It's nothing new to us. It's something that we have had on our plate for a long time. The solutions are not easy, because all of that land down there, for the most part, is privately owned. So, what we had to do with just the recent change in how many businesses are down there, getting an influx of people, and the parking has become a real problem. So, what we're looking to do, and what we have done, the city manager has had negotiations with some of those owners. We have had some movement, small movement so far, in being able to use some of their parking area. But we hope to enlarge that. And the plans down the road, we have to, we have to, if we're going to grow into this wonderful place that we talk about and want to bring to Port Ritchie, we have to get a parking garage. That's down the road. But right now, it's a dream. And the monies have to come forward, and grants and all that have to be gotten. And there's a lot of ground to cover before we get there. So, right now, we are looking for the short-term solutions, and we are also keeping the long-term solutions as close to our hearts as we possibly can to get them done. Thank you.
Well, you can stay there for the next question. And I'm still going to ask about waterfront parking, but I'll do it a little bit later. You're an eight-year incumbent. Mayor Massad, Massad, excuse me, was elected in part on a campaign that was critical of CRA spending, including subsidizing salaries for city employees. You were on council at the time. If the mayor's correct, don't you bear responsibility, some responsibility, for approving those budgets that allowed money to be used for payroll? And if the mayor's correct, are you responsible for the slow pace of redevelopment in the city?
Yes, we are. I'm not going to run from that. CRA is a great thing. When it was, I believe it was Mr. Lupo that brought it to our city. It had been planned to do great things with. But this is a trap. It's kind of a, kind of a snare that all the cities have fallen into, and that, with the economic downturns that we had in the past years, it was very difficult for anyone to operate a full-service city with the monies that we were taking in at that time. So, more and more, some of those things had to be used with CRA funds. Now, when Ellen Posivak was city manager, she got a lawyer in to make sure we were legally doing these things. The lawyer said we were. It doesn't change the moral fact that I and others do not like the fact that we use a lot of the CRA funds for things that don't create the changes and the renewal that we are supposed to use it for. This last year, the city of Port Ritchie has weaned itself off 13% of the CRA funds. It's not a lot, but it's a start, and I think it's more than any city in Pasco County has done.
Mr. Colombo?
Same question.
Yeah, and do you need to hear it again?
No. The CRA fund. CRA funds, for those of you who don't know who they are or what it is, I should say, Community Redevelopment Act was to fight blight, very simply to fight blight. There has been not a lot done with our CRA fund that has actually fought blight. There was one matching program we had for a period of time that allowed, we had paint-up, fix-up funds. That went quite well. The issue that you brought up, as far as using funds, CRA funds, for salaries, was originally designed so that every administrator, we're a small town, the city manager, different people, a part of their time is spent on CRA projects, so we could allocate funds of their salary to those different projects, and we would put them on different line item budgets. That started back both around the time of city manager Posivak, as Terry pointed out. But it also was a result of the fact that, a number of years ago, you brought up Mr. Massad. When he was on council, we, they did a radical drop in the city mileage rate, from about 5.85 down to 3.9%. They basically put the city in a hole, and it was forced to lean on the CRA, like so many other cities were, to budgetary things that should be done. I look forward to us using the CRA fund for what it was intended, to fight blight. And the all light is on. I think I said what I needed to say.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Well, stay up there.
You'd think I'd have the system down by now, wouldn't you?
No. I'm going to go back to waterfront parking. Mr. Rowe mentioned it. I had it as one of my questions.
Sure.
You're right. The parking garage, I think, was talked about more than 20 years ago. Waterfront parking in Port Ritchie, it's just a never-ending dilemma. Now you've got new businesses down there. So, I would ask that, if you're on council after the election, what do you believe the city should be doing to ease the tight parking in that waterfront district?
Well, the city should be doing what it's always tried to do, and that is securing more parking down there. Hopefully, some of that property down there will become available at a reasonable rate we can do it. Now, the original waterfront overlay district plan was predicated on, again, a multi-level parking garage. They were expensive then. They are monumentally more expensive now. Without huge outside grant money, and we all know there's not grant money coming from federal, state, or county for any project like that, it's just not going to happen. So, we have to try to acquire what property we can. We have to look creatively with other areas, perhaps, for off-site parking and running a trolley in to bring people in. We have to do some creative thinking. It is blindly obvious that the parking is inadequate for the activities going on down there now. Waterfront park, did you have a part of that question?
No, I mean the waterfront district.
Okay, the waterfront district, yeah. Yeah, so, parking is a huge issue. It truly is. But again, that really means that the parking, as written into the waterfront overlay district code, we need to revisit a lot of the waterfront overlay district code. It's a 20-year-old code, and times change, the businesses down there change. It was a great plan when it was put into place, but it has evolved it to something different, and not necessarily better or worse. It is now part of what modern times are. So, we need to look at that, the way those different codes are written, and see what we want to accomplish and modify the code. We should not ignore the code, and that's, too much of that has gone on in this city. Thank you.
The person coming on council should put this first priority. And I have made that statement on council. It has gone from an important thing to a absolute thing we have to solve. We're going to have to solve it for the near future, and we're going to have to solve it for the future. The near future, we are trying desperately to negotiate with the people that hold those lands in that area. And I'll be talking about this project later, but we are going, we are in the middle of working through an extension of the hike and bike trail to go from Salt Springs Park through the business district, under the bridge, to the east side of the river, and then connect to Newport Ritchie. Now, if we can do that, and if we can do that soon, which is going to be a very difficult task, but we're pedaling as fast as we can on this one, that will give us some area on the east side to do parking and be able to bring people into that district without them having to walk across 19, which is a death trap. So, these are the things we are looking at. These are the things we are negotiating. I don't want to say too much, because a lot of that land is owned by the Casino Boat. They've had a recent fire. Some of their position has changed, and that is, I'll just say, the reason why we are not in better shape right now, because we had planned to be. And that changed the dynamic at the time, that there are lawyers in that, are telling them that, I won't want to say anymore. So, we are going to move ahead with or without that, and we're going to do the very best we can to get all the parking we possibly can. Thank you.
Oh, you stay there.
Yeah, we're slow to pick up here.
You mentioned the dredging. I think probably everyone is pleased that the dredging has begun. But it's really begun because that BP money became available. It was a long-stalled project. Can the city complete a dredge of all its residential canals without assessing homeowners? Or is the, is the plan B to dredge those residential canals and ask the homeowners to pay for it?
Well, our original, I've been on, I was on the Port Authority Board. I was on the Port Authority Committee for several years, and it, their main drive was to get a shovel in the water, because then we would pick up the momentum. Well, we've got that shovel in the water, and we're going to do two more sections with the BP oil money. After that, it falls back onto the council coming up and the ones after it, to commit itself. And I brought this up in a meeting, I believe, last month. I said, this city needs to commit itself to this project. This is a waterfront community. It is dependent on the taxes that come from the majority of those homes that are on that waterfront. If we can get this dredging done, and I don't care if we do one channel a year, we have the disposal site set up. That was a biggie, and it was expensive, and it was trouble getting it through all of the government agencies we had to get through to get it out there and open. But it's open now, so we can use that, and we can continue to use it. And I, if I'm on council for the next session, I am going to make every effort to make sure that our council locks in, so that we continue to push and do a channel at least every year. And if it takes us 20 years, but we're closer than we ever have, we have the possibility of doing this, the monies are going to be tight, we're going to have to find a way to pay for it. I don't believe people want to do the assessment, but if we start things rolling, I'm hoping that maybe some of those people will change their mind. But if not, we have to find ways. I want to get one channel done a year, if nothing else.
Same question, Mr. Colombo.
Yeah, would you restate the first part of it, and then I'm going to rudely interrupt you?
Okay. Well, those are what I get for ad-libbing. Now, I don't remember what I said. I said, I think most everyone's happy that the dredging has begun.
Okay.
But that first part is being done with BP money.
Right.
Can the city complete the residential canals without going to the homeowners?
This is where I interrupt you.
And seeking an assessment? Or is there a plan B not to do the residential?
To answer your question, no. I was on council along with Terry, and I supported everything that came before council to get us to the permitting stage that would allow us to dredge. At that point, we came to a stage, and we had a meeting. And the meeting had virtually everybody who was interested in dredging. And that was the step in the engineering process where we were going to put together a special election amongst those people who directly were benefited by dredging for an assessment. The house was full, and when I asked, is there anybody here would agree to an assessment, two hands went up. That's when I voted no. I was not spending $15,000 to have a special vote on something I knew was not going to go in. Now, we always knew we were going to need matching money, and the Restore Act funds, the BP money, as it's known, has allowed what's happened so far to happen. That was secured, again, by actually our former city manager, Tom O'Neil, and our current Vice City Manager, Jocelyn Martinez, in working with the county and Newport Ritchie to secure those funds. That will allow the dredging of what has already been done, which has been a couple hundred thousand dollars that was taken out of our CRA fund to match those Restore Act funds. That dredged Channel 19 and the dredge material management area and the fence that went around. It didn't really benefit anybody. It's just a way to get rid of the dredge. The next two channels are what's called Shrimper's Channel runs along, and then down along Guild Dog, that channel. That's where the money runs out. That's where the dredging stops. Now, we do not have the funds in the CRA to continue dredging. It will have to be done by an assessment. I don't see any other grants coming down the line. I wish I had better knew than that, but that's just a fact. It's just the way it's going to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Stay there. Stay there. Can we try my system for a while?
I'm back.
I forgot where I was here. Okay. As a city council member, you really only direct to employees, the city manager and the city attorney.
That's true.
So, give me your evaluation of city manager Vince Lupo.
City manager Vince Lupo obviously has an awful lot of experience in the city of Port Ritchie. This is the second time as city manager. The first time didn't end so well. He knows the ins and outs of running a city. I am not particularly fond of the way city meetings are being run right now. The city agenda, what goes before council, is the responsibility of the city manager. I see purchases being done on consent agendas that should be agenda items. I see salary increases. Frankly, I don't know how this goes. Terry was speaking a bit ago about how we've taken salaries and removed them from the CRA fund, yet the top four employees in management, in the city administration right now, make over $309,000 a year. That's a lot of money for four managers in a very small city. I want to make a leaner city, a more competent city, and by gosh, a more transparent city. I want everything that is a major purchase. We bought a $22,000 printer and a $22,000 truck for the building inspector, who makes $74,000 a year, and is not a licensed building inspector. And we bought both of those items on a consent agenda. It was not in the agenda packet, and the people who voted on it and approved it did not even have that piece of paper in front of them. That is not the way to do business. That is not my fiduciary responsibility as a city council member to allow those sorts of things to happen. Does that answer your question? Okay.
Mr. Rowe?
Well, first of all, I'm going to respond to something I believe I heard, that Tom O'Neil was responsible for this dredging. It was the county, Curtis Franklin, that brought that to our city. They just happened to be there when he came. And it has been this council that has pushed it through and got it started. With that being said, as far as Vince Lupo, yes, he worked for us before. We got a new city hall. We got a new fire department. Gee, he got things done. I don't agree with every decision that Vince makes. We've had our differences. But I can work with Vince. He's a reasonable man, but he's driven. He's driven because he realizes he's not a young man anymore, and he wants to make a difference before he leaves Port Ritchie this last time. And look what he's done. Look what he's done in comparison to Tom O'Neil, the previous one. Look what he's done in comparison to Tom O'Neill, the previous one, Ms. Possavick before that. There has never been this kind of movement in Port Ritchie since I've been there, and I think from the history I've heard, long before. So yes, there's people that do not agree with Vince Lupo. There are salaries that I am not happy with. However, as you know, we don't have the ability to stop that. That is the city manager's decision to make, within his budget. So I have to work with him on that and trust him that he can work this budget. And if he can do the salaries he's doing and all the things he's doing and bring down the taxes, it's a win-win.
Stay up there.
We're going to, we're not going to...
I'm not letting you drop the mic.
Chain myself here, okay?
What is the one question you'd like to ask your opponent here tonight that you would want him to answer?
About what?
What is the one question you would like to ask your opponent who's here tonight, ask him to answer?
Well, there is one question that has bothered me for a long time since it's happened, and that is, we had a water problem in our city. There was a big problem in our water plant, and the water was not, it was not what it should have been by any means. We were spending money outside of city. I fought and fought and fought with my own city council to get them to do something about the water plant, and they sat there and just berated me because I wanted to bring this up in front of the public. Public was the one that had to drink it, bathe in it, do their clothes in it. Well, all of a sudden, Lupo came in. Another one of the things that Lupo did was go back there and look at that water plant and found it to be so substandard, it was embarrassing. In fact, in my opinion, if there was any way, I would prosecute someone over the condition of that water plant as we found it. They tell me I can't do that. So I would ask Mr. Colombo, I remember those meetings, why did you not support me when you knew the water was bad? I brought you samples. I showed you everything I could possibly do to make sure that you understood we had a crisis, and no one supported me, and I felt like I was the last one on council by myself during that period, and I was very disappointed. So that's the only thing, how could you look at that situation and not realize how critical it was?
Mr. Colombo, you'll get a chance to answer that question, and then ask your own.
Okay, I will answer that question. I have the same tap and the same toilet that you do. I saw that brown water. I saw that mason jar of nasty stuff that you kept over by your desk, your desk, your chair, every meeting. I was well aware of that. We had a case of, we had a long-protracted drought. We have very shallow wells. We have two old wells behind the city hall that were basically pumped to the point where the chloride level had risen. The freshwater floats on the chlorides. We got into the chlorides. That was the bad water we were getting. What do you do in that situation? The first thing you do is you start augmenting the city production. You take the weight off of the city wells, which cannot support it, and you augment it with other water. Now, don't forget, the water that we purchase is water that's ready to go. We don't have to pay to treat that water. So what happened, Terry? Over a period of time, we rested those wells. They got recharged by rainfall. We've made improvements to the city, the ability to process water, but the bottom line is, we've recharged those shallow wells. We're going to get back there again. Now, the city continues to, it's in the city budget, it's in the city audited financials. Y'all keep saying you're not buying water. You are buying water. Now, it's not coming before council. I don't know what amounts and how it's getting paid, but we still continue to buy water to augment our city water. I have seen the water get harder recently, not in brown, but in mineral stains. So again, we have a small well system. We can pump just so much water. I will add that I had a reclaimed water project in place that was funded, that the day, the next meeting I left council, that council voted them out. The reclaimed water went away. All that potable water is now going on lawns, out in sand pebble in the big developments. That's what I tried to do. That's what was voted out. That's it.
Stay up there. Stay up there. I'm going to give you the same opportunity. What's the one question you'd like to ask your opponent here tonight?
You know, I really don't have a question to ask Terry. I served with him for so long, and I've followed him since he's been on council. I know Terry to be an honorable guy. I know Terry to be a guy that has always voted his conscience, and I respect at the time that I've served on council with him, along with many of the other folks on council. I don't really have a question. I would just say to Terry, keep being yourself, you know, be your own man and vote your conscience. I really don't have a question to ask. Sorry, I don't know if that breaks the rules, but I could ask you who's going to win the Stanley Cup, and if you could answer that one, I'd like to hear that.
Do you want to rebut a statement that you're an honorable man? Okay. Well, okay. We're going to go to closings now, and I believe we're going to go in the same order. Yes, so Terry, you go first, and then Mr. Colombo. Two minutes, yes.
I'm afraid a little of this will be redundant since I've covered, but ladies and gentlemen, this is what to look for in Port Ritchie in the very near future. We are working to extend the hike and bike trail from Salt Springs Park, as I said, through the business district, underneath the bridge, to the east side of the city and connect with Newport Ritchie. We're going to renovate and improve the Nick's Park boat ramp and the parking there. We also have new sidewalks in the making. Those are being paid for with funds that are just specified for sidewalks. They won't be coming out of CRA. Parking in and around the water overlay district, as we've talked about, is a nightmare, has been, we're working on it, and I hope, I hope that something is going to move very shortly with all the negotiations we're doing to fix some of that. If we can just release some of that area for parking, I think would help a great deal for right now until we can get something long-range. When I'm re-elected, I will continue to work hard for the people of Port Ritchie, as I have done for the past eight years. My vision for the future of Port Ritchie is to bring this great little city by the river into a new and thriving era. Growth is inevitable. I want it to be done in such a way so that we don't lose the warmth and charm that our little city has always possessed. We are, as you know, the gateway to the Gulf. I believe that we can bring our waterfront community forward with a balanced blending of business and residential harmony. The work is unfinished; there are many challenges that remain. With a true conviction and a sense of purpose, I can and I will bring our city to new heights. Today, I ask you for your vote. Please vote for Terry Rowe on the 10th of April. Thank you. God bless Port Ritchie. God bless Newport Ritchie, our sister city, and God bless the United States of America. Thank you.
Thank you once again. I really appreciate this happening. I think this is very important. I'd love to see more of these. In closing, again, my main issues are going to be competency, transparency, and common sense on the city council. I would like to see infrastructure really get back on the front burner. We have redone lift stations. We ran many new water mains. We did a lot of road paving. We serve the entire city of Port Ritchie, not just the waterfront overlay district, and sometimes that gets kind of lost in the mix. There's a lot of folks out there. There's a lot of neighborhoods that really need fixing. I can point to what we did, and I believe Terry was on council then. We repaved Limit Drive, and that was a really rundown area, and it's amazing how just paving a road can change the nature. I'm agreeing with him again. Orange Road Avenue that goes out to that other portion of Candlewood Estates, which is half-owned by us and half-owned by the county, we've been fighting with the county for I don't know how long to get that road repaved. I am on board 100% with fighting to keep that over. Again, we need to realize that we're a small city. We have a lot of different demographics. We're not all waterfront property owners. We're not all business owners. There's a lot of modest folks, just like me, don't live on the water. We don't benefit from a lot of the projects that are out there. We make, need to make sure that we keep the property rates low. By the way, the last property drop reduced property value. If you had $100,000 in taxable property rate, your taxes went down 39 cents. So it wasn't a huge drop. Every other year was a raise. I would like to keep the property taxes low, though. I look forward to no raises in property taxes or water taxes. Thank you all very much. Before you put up the sign, I'm getting ready to go. I appreciate everything you do. Thank you, Mr. Bowen. It's always fun sparring with you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Very informative and two articulate candidates, and we appreciate you being here. Let's all give them another hand of applause. Thank you. I got to say, everybody go out and vote. With that, we thank you, and then the Newport Ritchie candidates will start at 7:00. So we've got a little bit of a break here.
Could I keep my name?